To our September 8th Douglas County Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. We want to welcome all of you who are with us here in the courthouse as well as those of you who are joining us online. Just a bit of information as we run this hybrid meeting. All participants who are joining us online will be entered into the meeting with their audio muted, meaning the commission and the public will not be able to hear you. Presenters will be unmuted when their agenda item comes up. We ask that all online presenters use good conference call etiquette and mute their line when not speaking and introduce themselves each time they speak. If you have a public comment on an agenda item, either here in the courthouse or online or for a regular public comment, please use the raise your hand function on Zoom or come to the front of the room if you're in the courthouse. Staff will call on you and unmute you on Zoom. We ask that all speakers get their name and address for the minutes and keep your remarks to under three minutes. The county reserves the right to shut off the microphone and remove any speaker from the meeting if they are vulgar, rude, or inappropriate. A recording of this meeting will be available on our website after the meeting. We will start this evening with a proclamation declaring September 2021 as suicide prevention month. I believe that Steve, you are with us today, the CEO of Kansas Suicide Prevention Headquarters, to present this item. Would you like to say anything before we read the proclamation?
Well, good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Steve DeVore, President and CEO of the Kansas Suicide Prevention HQ. I know myself and some of our staff have had a chance to stand here before you lately, and we've talked about some of the initiatives that we were going to propose and have a chance to be able to move forward on. But tonight I get to do something a little bit different. Tonight I get to stand up here and say thank you. I get to thank you all for the opportunity to be here and receive this proclamation. The proclamation is more than just for our organization. You know, we're representing National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and there's a lot of great organizations, both locally in our community and throughout the state. They work tirelessly, just like we do, to be able to help those people in need. And so tonight I just wanted to be able to share with you all and those that are joining us on Zoom about what the opportunities we have tonight with this proclamation really mean. And what this is going to allow us to do is to start conversations. Hopefully, those that are watching and us, we're going to be able to go home and we're going to talk about this proclamation tonight. We're going to talk about, hey, what are the things that we're doing? I applaud the county. If everybody walked in, you saw we're doing our chalk about suicide prevention. So all throughout downtown, you're going to see, you know, some chalk art that's representing that. It's just another way that we can be able to have a conversation with people that are in need about what resources are out there. Unfortunately, as we all know, the trend continues to climb with those that are facing mental health issues, those that are facing depression and anxiety. There's a lot going on in our world right now. There's a lot that are weighing heavy on our minds and in our hearts, and we're here to help, just like you all are here to help. Everybody's here to fight this good fight together. So tonight I just want to be able to have the chance to say thank you again. I want us all to be able to go home, have conversations with our family, with our friends, with our teachers, with our coaches, with our pastors, whomever that might be. Just know that we care. Let people know that they're not alone. Let people know that if they need anything, our organization is here. Many other organizations are here. And so it's humbling to be able to stand up here and represent all of those different organizations throughout our community and accepting this proclamation this evening. So thank you for your time this evening in presenting this proclamation.
Thank you very much, and I do have to say I enjoyed the chalking as I walked into the building today. Whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 11.1 minutes. In Kansas alone, one person dies by suicide every 15 hours. Whereas in 2019, 523 Kansans died of suicide, leaving thousands of friends, family members, and loved ones changed forever by their loss. Whereas suicide is the second-leading cause of death for Kansans aged 15 to 44 and the 10th-leading cause of death for people of all ages in the United States. Whereas the Douglas County Suicide Prevention Coalition, which is comprised of representatives from agencies, schools, law enforcement, and social services, including Kansas Suicide Prevention Headquarters, Headquarters Counseling Center, Burt Nash Community Mental Health Center, LMH Health, Douglas County Government, Willow Domestic Violence Center, Heartland Community Health Center, Communities and Schools Mid-America, Lawrence Douglas County Public Health, Lawrence Public Schools, Baldwin School District, Senior Resource Center, KU School of Social Welfare, Sexual Trauma and Abuse Care Center, KU Police Department, Douglas County Sheriff's Department, Boys and Girls Club of Lawrence, the American Association of Suicidality, and the community at large, and who are dedicated to reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and deaths through training, educational programs, and outreach, urges that all Douglas County residents recognize suicide as a significant public health problem in Kansas and Douglas County and declare suicide prevention a priority. Support the development of accessible mental health services for all Douglas County residents and encourage initiatives based on the goals and activities contained within the National Strategy for Suicide Prevention, Zero Suicide for the National Action Alliance for Suicide Prevention, and The Way Forward by the Action Alliance's Suicide Attempt Survivor Task Force. Whereas far too many residents of Douglas County in Kansas suffer alone through mental health crises or suicidal thoughts. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County do hereby designate September 2021 as Suicide Prevention Month and urge Lawrence and Douglas County residents to learn how they can help because suicide prevention is everyone's business. Thank you so much.
If we have the signed version of the proclamation, we can send it with you, Steve. Just a second.
Give us one second to have everyone sign it. And we will move to the consent agenda. Would either of the commissioners like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
No. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 1, 2, 3, 4, and whoops. Yeah, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
I think we need to first ask if anybody in the public wants to.
Would anyone joining us here in the courthouse or joining us via Zoom like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we can move forward with your motion then. Commissioner Kelly?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Reed, I second Commissioner Kelly's motion.
All of those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We will move on to general public comment. Do we have anyone in the courthouse today for general public comment? Do we have anyone online for general public comment? If so, please use the raise your hand function in Zoom. Okay. We will move on to our regular agenda, starting with emergency management, emergency public health order to provide support for non-congregate sheltering to limit the spread of COVID-19. Sarah, do we have a presentation on this item?
Thanks, commissioners. Our emergency management director, Robert Bennecke, is moving into the Zoom to outline this item, and I know Jill is also available if there are questions. Robert?
Great, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. So this emergency public health order, the background on this order is that throughout the pandemic, we've had in our community the need to house people that are in congregate settings or people in the community, whether they be healthcare, law enforcement, firepeople, that need to have non-congregate sheltering due to either isolating or quarantining. So if you'll remember last year in the spring, we started this process with an MOU with our community partners. And then shortly thereafter, we went, the state of Kansas, through Kansas Division of Emergency Management, backed by FEMA funding, actually staffed a hotel in our community, and we were able to use that at no cost throughout last year and into early this spring. And so when the state disaster or emergency order ended, that resource ended. And so what we've found is that this resource is still needed in the community. And so in order to fund a resource like this, in order to get FEMA public assistance or grant money, we have to make that request through CADM, through Kansas Division of Emergency Management. One of the requirements through CADM, through FEMA, is that in order to support, in order to be able to get that reimbursement or that grant money later back to us would be that we have a health order supporting the effort in place. So that's the background on how we got to the order supporting non-congregate sheltering for COVID. So what this order will, the future of this order basically will be attached to a request through CADM to FEMA, Region 7, and hopefully we'll know, we'll get approval back. And then the process will be that MOU process that we started with last year. We will continue, we will go back to that process where our partners will enter that MOU, for instance, like the community shelter or Burt Nash, somebody needing to house a client, or it could be the hospital. And if they need to house and they're in that MOU, they would fund that housing. They would fund the housing, the feeding, and any laundry and cleaning, those kind of things. And then come back through us, which we would manage and organize a reimbursement to them, and then we would track that for reimbursement through FEMA. So in a really fast nutshell, that's how we got to this public order, supporting our request for funding through FEMA. That helps. Jill, what would you add?
Commissioners, I would just add that we had a similar agreement in place with community partners. We have an agreement format all ready to go, an updated version all ready to go out to our providers that's been shared with them. We entered into similar agreements with organizations prior to the Baymont Inn opening, which was our isolation and quarantine shelter that was run by the state that opened, I think, I forget, I want to say sometime, I think September, August or September of last year. But we had an agreement in place that was most robustly used by the Lawrence Community Shelter. It worked really well. They accounted for all their expenses. They submitted a reimbursement request to us. And at that time, we didn't have any assurances that we would have a mechanism from FEMA to reimburse them, but we did. It all worked out, and so it worked pretty seamlessly. And our providers are anticipating having that resource available when they need it, should the circumstances arise again in the future. The impetus for doing this as a preventive measure was largely at the, it came for cause with some of the challenges that LCS experienced with a pretty substantial outbreak that impacted staff and clients. But the resources available, we'll make it available to enter into that agreement with LCS, Willow Domestic Violence, Burt Nash, the hospital if they deem necessary, and then the other partner agencies that work closely with our homeless community.
Thank you both. This is Commissioner Portillo. Thank you both for that overview. It does sound like this is something that's necessary to ensure that we can access funds if they're needed. I did get a question from a constituent about dorms being included in this emergency health order. And I think that the question was mostly aimed at not wanting to have to evacuate dorms, which I totally agree with. We're very excited that we can have students living in dorms on campus. But my understanding is that we want to keep dorms included in case they need access to funding for some sort of outbreak as well. How have we worked with the universities in our county around this?
Yeah, so I had that same question today as well, Commissioner. So I'll just say to the question of dormitory specific, yes, as a future resource if needed, but there are no plans to evacuate or ask any of the universities to use their dorms right now. But whether it's a dorm or it's apartment building or another type of non-congregate shelter, we could have used probably five examples listed there. But that language for the dorms comes directly from the state order last year. And so that language was just carried over from there. But no, it's more of, you know, we don't know where the pandemic is going to go. We don't know, you know, if it'd get much worse before it gets better. And so it's an opportunity if there was a need to. Or, but really, we're focused on hotel motel. And, you know, and that's the probably the more reasonable and cost-effective way to go. So.
And I would just offer as well that we're taking a much more stricter interpretation of who is and is not eligible for this resource. We are only making it eligible to individuals that have a confirmed case. So it's for isolation purposes only. So we're requiring the provider agencies to get that documentation. And so we're not, we're not doing it for isolation and quarantine purposes. It's just for isolation. And we did, we did both last time, so we're taking a much stricter interpretation. And I will take this opportunity that we will, our providers continue to express concern around reticence of our hotel operators to be collaborative partners with us in the community. I think what this agreement sets us up nicely to do is to reimburse our provider agencies to provide the level of support that those clients need to stay safely housed and in their room and supported. So it should not be a concern ideally to the hotel operators or any guests. But I know it continues to be a concern that our providers in the community that are trying to support this community and operate things like emergency shelters, they continue to be challenged with. And we need our hotel operators to work with us in partnership on this as well with the assurance that the county is going to do our best to try to reimburse with those FEMA funds.
Thank you both. Do you have any additional questions from commissioners?
Just a little bit of a follow-up on the dormitory question. This would be in partnership with a post-secondary institution, right? We wouldn't take over the dorm, I think. I got that same communication, and I wanted to make sure that it's an agreement that we would have to use that dorm. We wouldn't take it over. Because I think sometimes when you hear health orders, it's we're going to take it. You know, we're using our authority, but that's not what this is. Is that my understanding, is my understanding correct?
You're correct, Commissioner. It would be a collaborative effort as a resource.
And it could be in a situation where the University of Kansas asks for that and then to allow for reimbursement associated with it. Last year, they did have specific dorms specifically isolated for isolation and quarantine. I was trying to think of a different word. But so it would, in all likelihood, come from a request from the university.
And because those resources were being made available by the universities, university students were not eligible to stay at the isolation and quarantine hotel. They were encouraged to stay at the university resources. And so, yeah, it was pretty seamless the last time. We're confident it will be this time as well.
This is Commissioner Reed. I have a follow-up question to dorms also. And, you know, we're talking about University of Kansas, and I think the question was posed primarily about that. But Robert or Jill, can you speak to whether or not we're in communication with both Baker and Haskell also as the other universities? Haskell is going to be different because it's federal property. And, I mean, they're all different universities. One is a public university, one is on federal land. And so anyway, I'm just curious if we have plans there too because there are a communication with their campuses since they are smaller but still have dorms and other.
So I will say this, Commissioner, that we do have representation from both of those universities on unified command. And so they're at the table and part of the conversation.
I think we could also provide an update. Once this is complete, we can, and the resource is available, then we can communicate also with, within the unified command education branch as well, because I know that they're regular participants in the education branch conversations that happen.
We will open this. There aren't additional questions from commissioners. We will open this item up for public comment. Do we have anyone in the courthouse for public comment? Please come forward. Please make sure that you press the button and see the green light.
Good evening, everybody. Three of us here are graduate architecture students at KU. And for the last 25 years, Studio 804 has been leading the development of sustainable, affordable, and inventive building solutions. And it's all done by some of the most passionate students at KU. Last year, our predecessors built Monarch Village, a group of 12 tiny homes for the Lawrence Community Shelter. We repurposed and outfitted shipping containers with beds, toilets, showers, efficient mechanical systems. And we successfully, they successfully worked hard to give refuge to the homeless community here in Lawrence. Today, we're representing 31 graduate architecture students who would like to continue Monarch Village by constructing 10 more container homes for the Lawrence Community Shelter. Sadly, we haven't been able to collect the funding we need to begin construction. Having already attained a special use permit for the location of our project, we want to ask if you'd be eligible for this funding discussed in this agenda item or if there's any other funding that can support the completion of our permanent non-congregate shelters that can provide a safe space for many people across many years. Thanks.
Thank you. Jill, I don't know if we have an answer right away for this particular question.
First, probably need to put your name, make sure you show your name for the minutes. Couple of things. I am familiar with the Monarch Village project as an ex officio representative of the Lawrence Community Shelter. I think there are two separate, two separate issues. My understanding of the way that the, the way that the public health order and the framework that we're working under, that Robert has put the agenda requests put together is based on really close guidance from the Kansas Department of Emergency Management in the framework that is currently being executed in Sling County right now. And it's all based on that short 10-day window. And it really, it's a very limited program. I don't have any depth, deeper knowledge, whether or not capital expenses, things of that nature that would, sounds like would be necessary for a project like this. That said, the county did invest a significant amount of dollars in the Lawrence Community Shelter with our CARES Act funding to make some necessary improvements that, while they did not necessarily account for all of the capital improvement needs, we did focus first and foremost on the expenses that would make the shelter a more appropriate place to prevent not only COVID but other infectious diseases from spreading. I know that the Lawrence Community Shelter is working diligently to provide isolation space and implement procedures within the shelter to, such as vaccination requirements and things like that, to try to minimize future outbreaks. But as it relates to the Studio 804, I mean, the county doesn't, we don't really have any engagement in that process, and I think it's a separate matter with the Lawrence Community Shelter.
This is Commissioner Portillo. It sounds like this funding may be much more short-term for things that are already available. And the solutions that you've discussed are very much long-term, non-emergency funding solutions. And so this might be something that is separate from this particular, this particular emergency order. Though I certainly hear you on a sustainable, long-term option.
Yeah, and the idea is that the shipping container homes can pivot to meet the needs at whatever time, whether it be isolation units or transitional housing, they can meet the needs for the future. But thank you anyway. My name is Ethan Dabbin.
Do we have any additional public comment from anyone online? If so, please use the raise your hand function. Seeing none, we will bring this back for discussion amongst commissioners.
I don't really have any. I just want to address the public comment there. First of all, thanks for your work on the shelters that are out at the community shelter. It's really great, really thoughtful. I would continue your conversation with Lawrence Community Shelter as we think about some of the other federal COVID funds that we have. And that might be a good avenue for something long-term. Because I think that the need is definitely there, and I'm excited to hear that the students are willing to continue working on that project. We have to make sure that the people who own, who are going to maintain them and all the Lawrence Community Shelter is willing to do that. So I think you understand that. I don't really have any comments on this, just to thank Robert and Jill for your work on, you know, working with our partners on this to try to keep the community safe. Thank you for that.
I don't have any comments, but I'm happy to make a motion. As Commissioner Reed, I move to approve the emergency public health order. Robert, do you need more specificity? Okay.
Second.
All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. We will move to item 4.2, Douglas County Homelessness Needs Assessment. This is a discussion or a agreement with the Kansas Center for Research to perform the Douglas County Homelessness Needs Assessment. Do you have a presentation on this item?
That's me. Good evening, commissioners. This item that's brought for you today is the outcome of a series of housing and homelessness stakeholder convenings that the county and the city have organized. The, as a result of a homelessness summit that was organized by the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services this past spring to identify some short and long-term strategies to address homelessness in Douglas County and to come up with some aspirational visions for how federal dollars could be utilized from the American Rescue Plan to address homelessness and meet some of our goals that we've set as a community around ending homelessness. Among them, they built for zero, goal to end chronic homelessness by 2023. But what we are, the proposal that you're being asked to consider today will do a more comprehensive needs assessment of what's available in the community from a programmatic standpoint, a service standpoint. Who are the, who are the populations being served? Who are the populations not being served? To give the county and the city and our stakeholders a more, a fuller perspective on what is needed to invest in the short and the long term and how we can use those federal dollars in ongoing county support more strategically. This project and this proposal is going to require, we are waiving our purchasing procedures, which we've been very transparent with our stakeholder group, just as sheer timing to make sure that we can get this work started and be cognizant of the timelines of federal funds that are available through our state agencies and the pressures that are going to be put on this organization in the city, of course, to make sure that we're using those federal dollars as timely and thoughtfully as possible. So I'm proud to share that the efforts are well underway and our partners at KU that are going to be, that are with us tonight to answer any questions and maybe share just a little bit about the work that they've done for the Greater Kansas City Coalition on Homelessness that is very comparable to what they're going to do in our community. They've been working with us and attending our meetings on a regular basis. We had our data needs group met earlier today for the second time, and we're really trying to understand what are the agreements that we need to have in place? What are the data resources currently available to do a qualitative and a quantitative analysis of resources? And we have just amazing engagement from our partner agencies so far. And I'm really optimistic about how this project, what this project's going to yield. With that, Megan Tzak and Owen Cox with KUCPPR are available. And I might ask Megan to, and Owen, to talk a little bit about how they come to this work and the work that you did in Kansas City and stand for any questions that the commissioners have.
Sure, thanks, Jill. And Owen, feel free to jump in here. I'll just mention, as Jill mentioned, we conducted a needs assessment for the Greater Kansas City Coalition and homelessness. And that was completed last year. And the continuum of care for Kansas City spans the state line. So this included Wyandotte County in Kansas and Jackson County in Missouri. The work we conducted there, similar to our approach here, would be qualitative and quantitative. We were really setting out to answer questions that their continuum of care had specifically. So we were looking at what the current state of homelessness in their Greater Kansas City metro was, getting a sense of the housing and supportive services in the current state. And then how are people experiencing those services and housing? And the good and the bad, the strengths and the weaknesses and the gaps in services. And then to better understand the vision of all of the stakeholders that came to the table. So we did this in a number of ways, similar to how we've outlined this. Similar to how we've outlined this for Douglas County, we did quantitatively, I'll let Owen get into, but qualitatively, we hosted a number of focus groups with both providers and other stakeholders as well as individuals with lived experience, which we did in two of those in each county and that with the lived experience groups. And that included folks who were currently houseless or recently housed. And then we did some one-on-one conversations with individuals with lived experience to make sure we were getting a full picture of the types of populations of individuals who are experiencing homelessness. So we, we noticed as we did these focus groups that we were missing folks from the domestic violence community and veterans. So we sought out some individual conversations. And then we also held a focus group with youth who were either currently or recently experiencing homelessness. And with providers, we also conducted a survey and Owen, I'll let you talk a little bit more about the quantitative work.
Yeah, sure thing. Thanks, Megan. As Jill hinted at previously, we're sort of already beginning some of this process. One of the processes for the quantitative piece is to do a sort of a robust discovery process to understand exactly what information is already out there. One of the ways that we do this is leveraging any available open source information that is already out there about the community. This would look like things like information from HUD on homelessness within Douglas County. But additionally, we also leverage information from the Department of Education who defines homelessness slightly differently, making sure that we understand the differences between those populations, but also understanding the breadth of homelessness within the county. We're also then in the discovery process with various organizations that are participating stakeholders or service providers within the community. Many of these will be using the homeless information system and coordinated entry system that is available. So leveraging that information to the extent we can, putting together data use agreements to get that information. But then there's also other provider agencies that do not use that system. So we're really trying to cast a net where we can find all those individuals and make sure they are all represented in the data collection that we're doing for folks that are experiencing homelessness. And again, that's sort of the quantitative piece where we can describe the folks in a quantitative way. Then as Megan talked about, we really want to bring those individuals who have lived experience with homelessness and to discuss their experience and what that is like being a person with those experiences in Douglas County. And that's sort of that quantitative data collection police, excuse me, piece. And then we also, she mentioned this survey. And so we also have a survey that we'll put out with providers to do some more quantitative collection to sort of fill in any of those gaps that we're still having.
And then we took all of that data and analyzed it and pulled together some high level key findings for Kansas City that served as considerations for their development of a strategic plan. So it allowed us to also provide some best practice ideas from other communities. And so as we noticed, there were areas that kind of rose to the top where they might want to invest or try a new innovative idea. We shared some of those best practices, practices from other communities for their consideration as a part of the needs assessment, which was outlined in our, the key findings were outlined in an executive summary and then a completed designed report. Happy to answer any questions.
This is Commissioner Portillo. Thank you both for that overview of your work in Kansas City. And thank you, Jill, for the presentation of the work that will be done here. Just full disclosure, my husband does work for CPPR and worked on the Kansas City project a bit. So he is not at all involved in this project and isn't involved in any of the contracting discussions, but just a bit more information to frame the conversation. I don't have any questions. Commissioners have any questions?
This is Commissioner Reed. Thanks for that overview. I'm wondering if you could speak to us a little bit more about the strategies you used and have plans for using for engaging folks with lived experience, both currently experiencing homelessness and folks with past experience. And so I appreciate Megan that you mentioned in not having much data on folks experiencing domestic violence. And there's a lot of additional confidentiality and safety issues there. I work in our local domestic violence center. And so participation in things like focus groups or more, more public processes of engagement and gathering data is a concern for a lot of folks. So can you talk to me about some strategy, talk to us about some strategies you have for that?
Sure. I can tell you a little bit about what we did in Kansas City. I would just kind of set forth that for Douglas County, this is not a set process. This is something that we would want to establish as a part of kind of the needs assessment protocol stage where really working through what will work best in your community. And we would also want to kind of take the best of what we did in Kansas City. But also we've learned some things along the way and we want to kind of talk that through with folks. So I think we, we relied heavily on the stakeholders who we were engaging with, the providers, the continuum of care in Kansas City to do that outreach and engagement with individuals who are either staying in their shelters or working with them and their support services. Or if they were recently housed or particularly possibly partaking of service, like aftercare services. And so we relied on our stakeholders to help with that engagement. And that was really critical to bringing people from, you know, whether it be transportation or just getting people to engage. And of course, it was completely voluntary. We, we had groups. It ranged in ages and genders and experiences and type of housing. There was definitely we, I don't know if there was resistance to people, but to, to people joining, but the people who did join were provided tremendous input and feedback. And we offered a couple of different ways for them to do that. They were able to share verbally as we asked questions. We also provided papers so people could write their answers if they weren't comfortable talking in front of their peers or if, well, actually providers didn't stay. So that was a very confidential setting for individuals who might have been staying in service, like housing services themselves. So they were comfortable sharing as far as we could tell. The, the individual outreach was kind of, I mean, that was based on some relationships that we had established with providers. So we did some outreach and asked if individuals would like to talk with us. We did not, we did not write anybody's name down. We didn't ask people to sign in. This was all very, you know, anecdotal. We didn't attribute any quotes or specific information anyone shared to anyone's demographics. We didn't collect any of that information. So it was very much, we tried to make it as accessible and safe as possible. We really engaged closely with the Greater Kansas City Coalition and homelessness to help. With that, we put together a suggested list of questions, which we shared with them. We asked them to get feedback from their like communities that have individuals with lived experience working with them so that they could have a part in that. I think that's something else that we would want to do more of this time is to make sure that folks are co-designing and partnering with us to do this work. And I think we would be super open to having a different approach to even just the facilitation of the conversation and making sure that we're being as thoughtful as possible as we partner and have these conversations.
I think it's also helpful that, you know, Megan, I was really heartened to hear that you come at this work from a practitioner standpoint as well with your experience. And so I think that's really helpful in having the conversations with our partner agencies so far. And it's been really rewarding.
Yeah, I have a history of working in housing and homeless services in a couple of different communities over the years. And I'm a licensed clinical social worker, so I I understand the concerns that you bring up and I want to make sure we are as respectful and inclusive as possible.
I appreciate that. I have one more, excuse me, follow-up question to me. Maybe this is best directed towards Jill or, I mean, it's probably for all of you. I appreciate that thorough description of some of the things you tried and what you've learned and how open you are to really figuring out what works here and how to build those relationships. Can you talk to me about whether or not there is any discussion around or, or was there any practice of like incentives or any type of payment for people's participation? And, you know, just in the work that I do, sometimes we, we talk a lot around asking for a lot of information for people, from people and to relive trauma for us to observe and understand and analyze. And doing so without any degree of compensation can, I mean, it decentivizes some folks, certainly it deters folks. I just thought, I think it's also can be a values judgment. So I just, can you talk to me a little bit about that? Or Jill, are you able to speak to whether or not that's been part of the conversation with this funding agreement?
I'll just say, I'll let Megan talk about it and Owen, but it has, it was brought up, I think, in our first conversation as something that they suggested we consider. And because I think for the same reasons that you mentioned, I can't remember the last time or the first time I talked with Owen and Megan and Silk has joined us as well. We've had many conversations, but that was one of the first things that they brought up for the reasons that you brought up, Commissioner Reed. So I'm glad that you brought it up. And I do think that that's, that may be a separate budget item that we'll have to think about using some CARES Act dollars for. So it's on the table.
I can just share that as it is not part of this contract and it wasn't part of the contract with the Greater Kansas City Coalition work either. However, the coalition did elect to provide incentives for participants. And I think, I think you're 100% right. Compensating people for their time is something that we are always striving to do and believe wholeheartedly in. So I would certainly support that. And I'm happy to, to share with Jill or anyone kind of what the approach with Kansas City was, but they did, participants did receive gift cards for their participation, which the, the coalition provided.
Thanks very much. I appreciate it. I don't have any other questions.
I just have a quick question for Jill and maybe Sarah. So can you walk us through how you got to KU? You know, that great organization, sounds like they're very thorough. Glad to hear they have the experience, but just sort of how we decided on KU Center for Research here above anybody else?
It was very quickly trying to understand how do we find a resource to get the kind of answers that our stakeholder group was the information that there, our stakeholder group was saying, well, we need to have this to make an informed decision. And it was largely a Google search of comparative works and Kansas City popped up. And the Assistant City Manager, Brandon McGuire, actually took the time to do the first review of the work that KUCPPR did. And immediately you saw a lot of value in what is a local, a local partner who may have a good sense of what the regional landscape and the environment looks like. And it very quickly just led to having some very quick conversations and them just largely being available. And that really was it.
And the reason for the quickness is because of the KDads money. Is that correct? I mean, we need to, we have a limited window for that, right?
That was part of it. That was part of it. But there continues to be a sense of urgency amongst our stakeholder partners that we need to have a plan in place. We need to have as much information as possible about how we can utilize these dollar, these federal dollars that the county, the city and the state have access to. The sooner we have a plan, the sooner we have a sense of what our needs are, the sooner, the, the better positioned we will be to get as many federal funds as possible to have some impact on some major investments.
Yeah, I would just echo what Jill said, Commissioner Kelly, about the availability of community development block grant dollars from the City of Lawrence and emergency shelter grant funds that are already have already come into this community in 2020 and in 2021 and will continue to come forward. Plus at the state level as, you know, and then we're not even talking about our local ARPA funds yet. So it, it, there is a strong sense of urgency that we need to quickly determine what our gaps are in our system, which is what the needs assessment will help us do. And then in partnership with the next item on your agenda, to really give us that specific information in terms of supportive housing so that we can make these investments count based off of what is identified in that needs assessment. So there, there is definitely a sense of urgency about moving forward quickly.
Thanks.
Okay, we will open this up to public comment. Do we have any public comment here in the courthouse?
We do, Commissioner. I'm in a, online. Cheryl Lynn, I'm going to move you into the panel. Give me just a minute and all right, Cheryl Lynn, you can unmute and go ahead and offer your public comment.
I would like very much to thank the County Commission for taking this items so seriously and working on this. I would also like to thank this group at Kansas University for the idea of including the voice of the homeless here. I think that that is extremely important. I volunteer downtown. And some of the homeless have said to me that they feel deeply stigmatized and rejected by this community. Although I know that there are many people that are trying very hard to do good things here. I see homeless people. Sometimes it seems so disturbed to me after they've been living homeless for quite some time and have mental illness that can hardly even complete a sentence. And then someone recently that got put at the shelter seemed so much better just in a few days. It makes so much difference. And I know people don't want to hear sad things. They want to hear solutions. I talked to my old friend Lauren Henderson because I volunteer at the Dare Center. And I've been concerned and involved with these issues of homelessness, especially around mental illness for many years, off and on. And he showed me this book that he had of all the people that had been touched by homelessness that have passed away, many of them quite young. And then I thought of other people that I knew that he didn't even have in this big book. And I know people don't want to hear about sad things, but I counted up 43 people. And they've died from all kinds of different reasons. Some people with mental illness have simply frozen to death. I know of a woman with schizophrenia that died from heat prostation under the Kansas River Bridge. Some people have become so desperate that they've killed themselves. Others have died from some combination of overdosing and being in the heater with cold. I know that people are trying very hard to work on this now. But I remember even 20 years ago, trying to tell the state of Kansas, trying to tell our local city government and trying to tell Burton Ash that after middle health reform that we were seeing more people with mental illness than before. And it seemed to be getting out of hand. Um, this has bothered me a great deal. And I know that people want to point out the positive and uplifting things that are going on, but without a safety net. It's very hard to think of creative and inventive things that a person might do with those. Say from a peer support, peer support standpoint, when you're so concerned about their very lives. I know that an overly emotional appeal is not appealing. But you know, when you know people and you've met these people and you cared for them, and then you see them die in some unsettling manner in an alley or in a field or underneath a bridge, it is very difficult to watch. And I thank you for the, your concentration on this issue.
This is Commissioner Portillo. Thank you for the public comment. We will bring it back to commissioners for discussion.
I just, excuse me, this is Commissioner Reed here. I just want to I just, excuse me, this Commissioner Reed here, I just want to um again appreciate that this is um an urgent issue in our community. It it has been, it's it's evolved and manifested in different ways in the past year and a half that I think have engaged even more people um in the conversation. Excuse me, and has also um escalated the crisis in many ways. And I think has the that that we could see potential risk, you know, potential escalation of further crisis. And I believe that this is an action. And it's an important intentional step in figuring out how to mitigate that as best we can and figure out what the short term goals and long term goals are that dollars need to be invested in. And um which partners bring which pieces of the puzzle to the table um so that we can figure it out together. So I'm grateful for the opportunity of the dollars coming our way that helped us facilitate this. I'm um also grateful that it's a, that we have a local partner that um has such a robust, you know, staff and practice that can help us assess this in what while still doing the work, um but figure out how to fine tune that work and really make some long term plans. Um, so I just want to express that gratitude and I'm I'm eager to see how it goes. Um, and also looking forward to more conversations about how we respectfully and meaningfully engage community members and folks with lived experience throughout the process.
Just to I, the only comment I would make is to reinforce partners at the table, partners, pieces of the puzzle. I think that's what you said, Commissioner Reed, and I I was happy to hear that the city and the county continue to work on this in partnership. Um, I think we all have roles to play in solving this. And I know sometimes the city and the county don't always work together, but we're starting to see whether it's fire and medical or this issue that we're really working well together. And I'm excited to to hear and to get maybe some more clarity around, especially as we look forward to um allocating some of those ARPA funds, you know, having some clarity on what we think are the best ways to do that. And in order to do that, we need to really know what the populations are out there, what they're struggling with and and how we might best serve them. So this seems like a really smart um thoughtful approach with lots of partners involved.
I did disclose the connection. I'm going to go ahead and abstain from voting on this one. I do just want to say very much support this work and I'm happy we're moving forward.
With that, I'm, excuse me, happy to make a motion um to approve a sponsored research agreement with the University of Kansas Center for Research to perform Douglas County Homelessness Needs Assessment at a one-time cost of $71,525 with funding received by Douglas County from the United States American Rescue Plan.
Second.
And all of those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
And I have abstained. Thank you. And we will move on to item 4.3. Corporation for Supportive Housing Needs Assessment. Jill, believe we have a presentation on this item?
Actually, Commissioners, I think this one is, um, I'm gonna just quickly say that on uh Bob Tryansky, we've spoken with staff on this item and we've had a small, uh, we need to make a small another edit in the contract agreement. So we're going to ask to table this item until next week and move it to next week's agenda.
Sounds good. Thank you, Sarah. We will move on to item 4.4, Behavioral Health Partners Prefunding Agreement for Treatment and Recovery Center. Sarah, do you have a presentation on this item?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. We're moving into the webinar panel. Bob Tryansky, our Director of Behavioral Health Projects, along with representatives from Behavioral Health Partners, uh, which is the new uh Board of Directors that we have formed to help uh manage and operate the Crisis Center. Uh, the Treatment and Recovery Center on our Treatment and Recovery Campus. Um, and as a part of that work, the the members of that beha- uh Behavioral Health Partners include representatives from Douglas County, Lawrence Memorial Hospital, and Burton National Health Center. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Bob uh to outline uh the item.
Good evening, Commissioners. And Jill, I'm not sure if you're the technical uh expert at the moment, but we need to make sure that Jeanette has the ability to share her screen so she can share uh the PowerPoint slides we have for this presentation. This evening, we would like to ask for your approval uh in the next step in this process of bringing the Crisis Center online. And and that is to transition from a project management contract with LMH Health, which has been in place for the last two years, um to our first funding agreement with Behavioral Health Partners. Jeanette Kirkpatrick and Patrick Kelly are here from Burton Ash and from LMH Health, actually in the other direction from LMH Health and from Burton Ash. And we're going to let them kind of lead us through this, uh, because they have been so instrumental in shaping this part of the process. And at the end of the presentation, um we'll also have the opportunity for them to introduce um a new leader that is joining in this effort. So I'm not going to take any more time of your time because um our team has put in a lot of time to be ready to share where we are with you. So Jeanette.
Good evening, Commissioners. We are truly excited to come and share what we hope is that final agreement between Behavioral Health Partners and the county related to the pre-funding agreement for the operations of the Treatment and Recovery Center. As a brief just overview for those community members who are not familiar with this project, as Bob said, uh LMH has been a project manager for the last two years, so this will replace that agreement. Behavioral Health Partners is a 501(c)(3) that was, is a joint venture between Burton Ash and LMH Health. We have also appointed three, or I'm sorry, nine board members uh from each of our three community partners. So that being the county, uh Burton Ash, and LMH Health. As Bob indicated, we um will be introducing formerly Rich Phala, who is our Executive Director of the Treatment and Recovery Campus at the end of our discussion, discussion this evening. And we are very close to uh finalizing an agreement with our Medical Director for the Treatment and Recovery Campus, who is very familiar with um Lawrence, the Lawrence community, and has extensive uh behavioral health and uh background for adults and uh adolescents. The pre-funding agreement, as Bob said, will support the development of the center in 2021, leading to our opening in early 2022. The project is um under the initial budget that we discussed with you in April. So uh we are currently at a funding for operations and developmental costs in 2021, just under 1.174 million. With this project, we are continuing to develop our one team and taking steps forward to accomplish our goals. And we often use the phrase um with Bob of right care at the right time and the right place. And the Treatment and Recovery Center is part of that path to providing care for our community members in the right place. As part of our executive summary, um it was outlined to explain those proposed costs for 2021. And we will uh take some questions at the end of this discussion. We have gone through several iterations. One core strategy in our plan is that we will support our community with the treatment of substance use disorders, addiction, and serious mental illness. To support that work, we have been developing our facility, our governance, hard at work with our workforce, management, funding, and our operations. And uh Patrick will share with you uh some guiding principles that we have developed between Behavioral Health Partners and the county.
Thank you, Jeanette. Hi, I'm uh Patrick Schmitz, uh CEO at Burton Ash. Uh, as Bob said, a a partner uh in Behavioral Health Partners, and I am also on the governing board for Behavioral Health Partners. Thank you for the opportunity to join you tonight. We know that uh the work that we're doing is new and unusual. And as such, it really required us to do some uh thinking about how best we can work with each other um amongst the new partnerships and uh in with uh other partners out in the community. And so we spent time as a collective group thinking about what are the uh concepts and the commitments that we want to uh strive for in this work? Not only in getting this program stood up, but how we do it. Uh, and some of these concepts um include how do we create the best patient experience? We, how do we make sure that they uh get to uh the best kind of care that's possible with a sense of respect, inclusion, and compassion at all times? Uh, how do we engage their families, encouraging patients and their families in the involvement of their healthcare uh and their interaction with providers? We want to base our decisions as much as possible uh using data. Uh, whenever it's feasible, however, we know we need to listen to the expertise and the experience not only of the professionals at the table, but the 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 individuals that we serve or the individuals that we may serve, uh because that wealth of experience uh is extremely valuable. We also want to make sure that as we evaluate the success of our program, that we're doing it uh in a very transparent and timely manner uh so that we can uh assure ourselves and the community that what we're doing uh is uh good practice uh and uh financially viable. We also want to make sure that we um in our dealing with each other, that we have a fair dealing practice using a fair market, arm flakes, lengths, transactions. Um, and that they are, that we think about what's right for everyone involved. Uh, so that's kind of the concept in terms of commitments, and that's what you see on on the slide here is the the commitments that we have uh in this process. And there's no magical order in these, but we have a commitment to excellence uh and mutual success. Uh, we know that in creating this program, we need to maintain a strong commitment to not only the concept uh but to each other. We recognize that really to get to a pretty good adherence and good working uh uh solutions, uh that it'll likely take us two to three years uh to work through this. And that will continue to do a number of changes and that throughout that, we're committed uh through to excellence and success. Trust is incredibly important, and that's going to involve that transparent and timely communication uh about the opportunities, the strategies, the barriers, the conflicts. Uh, that will have to come in the form of candid dialogue and regular meetings, and we've been doing that uh throughout uh the spring and summer. Uh, and will continue moving forward uh along that path. Respect is incredibly important uh as we bring a collaboration of of different partners together and honor their resources and their talents and expertise. We're creating some new and innovative uh things, um and that really requires listening to everyone uh so that we can have some thoughtful problem solving um as we deal with some of the challenges. And that does sometimes involve uh having to figure out conflict resolution um as as challenges uh emerge. Uh, and we're working through those and are excited about that. Innovation is obviously a big thing. Uh, there is, to our knowledge, no one else in the state, uh, the region, and maybe not even in the country that is creating a program the way we are, not only in terms of the services, but in the partnerships. So we are innovating, we are creating something new. Um, and again, it requires us to keep focused on that um and and continue to look for partnerships and parties being involved. And lastly, we know that what we are doing is a huge investment, not only on the part of the county, but all the citizens of Douglas County who have come together to help support this. So we want to make ensure that we have careful financial management and a prudent approach uh to the business decisions. And so we're really uh working on all of those things uh towards a great outcome. And uh I will just turn us back over to Jeanette, who will actually walk you through uh some of the financial uh things we are considering and looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. So we provided that executive summary that has some detailed explanations of our personnel costs that total 800, it just over $813,000, which includes leadership, ongoing positions, developmental and direct care staffing and training. Related to our non-personnel expenses, there is some detail in there, but it um those costs associated are just over $361,000, include that development and implementation of our electronic medical record and ensuring that there is uh communication between all of our agencies, insurance, licensing, education, and consulting fees. We would really like the opportunity to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you. This is Commissioner Portillo. I will open it up to questions. Do we have questions from either of the Commissioners?
This is Commissioner Reed. Um, thank you for that overview. Um, while the screen is still pulled up, can you tell me what the patient items line is about? It's just a
Oh, sure.
All numbered compared to the rest of the numbers detailed, so I'm curious.
So that is just some of the items such as, you know, bracelets, those things um supplies, those things that we may need just a few of to start into 2022. And then we will progress into that budget as we are moving closer to our operations and opening of the facility. So that's just startup. Does that answer your question?
Sure, I'm a little more
Materials, education, training, and those things.
Okay, no, that's okay. Um, so my other question, I think, is probably primarily for um for Patrick.
Sure.
Patrick, you mentioned, you touched briefly on um wanting to inclu- you know, include the voices of um consumers and folks who have received services, who will be accessing these services. The, you know, voices from the community and not just the providers. So can you or anybody here, Jeanette, Bob, I invite anybody to jump in. Can you expand on that more and talk about what actionably has been done to seek out that sort of feedback and involve? I I mean, I'm interested in what feedback has been sought out about kind of current services and the the status of things or maybe the evolution of things in recent years as we've been building up to this moment and this opening of the Treatment and Recovery Center. But I'm also, you know, I just want to take the opportunity to discuss it because uh I want to make sure that there are some actionable plans in place for how to really engage folks in a meaningful way and not just speak about it, but have, be able to talk about how we're doing that. And if, I just want to make sure it's being built into the foundation of this, of this center, quite literally. So if um Patrick, you could talk more about that and anybody else who has some feedback, that'd be great.
I I think the the involvement of the community has been certainly ongoing or started before I ever came here uh four years ago in terms of gaining feedback about what our community wanted, needed. Uh, I believe that was open to everyone, and I know Bob has held additional listening sessions and and conversations uh throughout the community uh towards this end. And I know that as we uh prepared for uh the the vote on Proposition 1, we had a lot of opportunity to hear from our community about this aspect of the project. Um, I think moving forward, some of the things that we've discussed uh i- in addition to uh the governing board is creating some opportunities for some other types of advisory boards uh that could be populated by and would should be populated by uh those who um experience care there or those who may experience care there or those who have experienced care elsewhere and would like to continue to provide feedback. We haven't set those up formally yet, uh but I think that's some of the ideas that we've discussed. Um, and and um so I'll let uh Bob or Jeanette answer any additional because I know Bob's done a fair amount of work on this part of it.
And the only couple of, oh, go ahead, Bob.
So uh Commissioner Reed, thanks for that question. And I think um it is extremely important that we all ask that question and that we continue to hold each other accountable for asking that question again and again and again and again. Because to get to a point where we have regular, integrated people with direct live experience participating in the process as well as family members, um significant others, uh friends um who are, who are also connected with people who need care the most. Um, we need a real comprehensive Uh, we need a real comprehensive intentional plan for how to do this, and that's not the answer. Um, what we have done is we have had consumers and peers directly involved in some of the initial planning for the facility. We have had some real thoughtful feedback. From people who are working as peers at DECA, at Burt Nash, at the library. Who have raised questions throughout this process in ways that can be really effective. Um, without necessarily having a designated seat at the table uh for somebody. We do have a designated seat at the table for a lived lia- lived experience liaison. At the um Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition. At the table with the CEOs and the chief operating officers who are in that particular meeting. I know that Sarah and Russ Johnson. Uh, as the champions, executive sponsors of the Leadership Strategy Team for the B H L C. Are, are tasking us to come up with a structure for um an advisory group that will have that balance of. Direct lived experience, people who are in the community and very concerned about this work. Um, a- and others, so that we can have a body, not that meets by itself, but can be intentional about how we deploy that lived experience perspective. Throughout all of the work groups that we're doing. I would say that two things have made it difficult to make progress on this. The first is COVID has just made it difficult for too long for people to meet and be thoughtfully. In a safe space around a table to have conversation. That's not an excuse, but it's part of an explanation. And part of the challenge, we need to move forward. And then the second thing I would say is um that a lot of the work here that you see so far is really technical. It's financial modeling, it's girders and laundry and, and things like that that are really not relevant. To patient care from a consumer perspective. So I think the question, this is the ideal time to raise that's this question, and it's the ideal time for us to. Really focus on coming to you with answers instead of talking about what we, what we, what we can do and what we, what we should do. So I thank you for the question, and I hope that gives you a slice of what I would say are inadequate so far attempt to do this. Um, but not for lack of trying and not for lack of, of intention. Did I, part for the rest of our partners, did I kind of summarize that okay from our perspective and Commissioner Reed, do we answer the question?
You did, you did answer the question. I appreciate it and I um. Yeah, to your, to your point, Bob, I think that it's just a, a question to continue to raise and. Ask ourselves individually, ask at um meetings such as this, at continued meetings. Um, towards our opening, but really figuring out what the actionable ways of engaging folks. Into the conversations about what patient care will look like, what will it look like for a community member to step foot into that building? Um, and be offered supports and services, what, you know, how, I mean, just truly, how will that look? Step by step, what are the options and how do we ask people um to engage with us about what? What would be most useful to, to have um in those moments, so. I appreciate the um, the acknowledgement of kind of where we've been and what some of the challenges have been and. Know that there's been a ton of technical conversation and that it's been ongoing for, for a long time, so. Um, but now is a definitely a time, you know, to mark this first um financial agreement and to be. Really within reach of opening this space. I just, I want that to be a focus and to not forget. To invite that conversation and to you, and to leverage. The various crisis centers in this community, uh, you know, agencies that have been doing different types of crisis intervention and crisis work. Um, and with different models and how to leverage that experience um in figuring out how to. Get that sort of feedback effectively and how to, how to be as trauma informed and. I mean, there's a lot of knowledge that's held in those agencies and providers that have been doing different types of crisis intervention without the brick and mortar. Um, that we're building. So anyway, thanks for the, for the feedback.
This is Commissioner Kelly and um. So much work is in this um partnership and Patrick, I really appreciate the slide with the. Five ideas that the group has been talking about. I wondered, because it's a partnership, if you could just give us a little picture of. Sort of what costs um have been um. Realized for the different organizations, you know, so from LMH's perspective, from the county's perspective, Bob, maybe from. From Burt Nash, and I'm not just talking financial costs, but, but also those organizational costs. Um, as you create this partnership and, and what you're discovering as you continue to do this work. I think that's helpful for me to thinking about how that continues to support your work. Um, but I think it's also helpful for the community to understand how. How challenging this work is as we try to create something that. Um, quite honestly, there's not a lot of this nationwide.
Uh, this is Patrick Schmidt. Um, cost, you know, I think in terms of the actual cost outlay, Jeanette is probably one going to be able to tell you. Some of those actual dollars, dollar amounts, because uh LMH Health has really stepped up on that. For us, it really has been uh more in terms of the staff spending a lot of additional time. Walking through what this could look like, how we could operate. Uh, changing the way we operate, uh, changing the way we think of things. Uh, a- as many people would say, uh, recall years ago, the idea of this was that Burt Nash was going to operate it. And we pivoted on that a few years ago. Uh, it, and, and so you shift your thinking for how do you do this individually to how do you do this as a group? And what ideas, what things do you let go of from your original vision to a new vision that uh as we see it is. Going to result in an even better outcome for our community. Uh, and really for the people that we're serving, so that's a cost, right? When you change the way you think of something and you shift it, uh, but I think for us. Uh, we see that there's a huge benefit by doing that shift. Uh, because what I think we uh are seeing is that we're better together uh than individually. Uh, but that takes change, um, and change is difficult, as you know, Patrick. Uh, from all your work at K L C and, and uh your leadership and teaching us how to change better and, and manage it. Uh, but so that for us is really just that time um and, and uh effort to do things differently.
Commissioner Kelly, thanks for your question. This is Jeanette Kirkpatrick. So uh we are really blending uh different community uh partners and their systems and processes. So there are some learning opportunities and efficiencies there that we have um taken advantage of throughout this time. Our current costs, we are, uh, have some program development of our workforce, so we are currently actively recruiting for some of those members. Um, we will be in the uh development of professional services agreements with our community partner agencies such as DECA. Heartland and Heartland Radac in providing services within that building because we will have multiple entities. Uh, providing continuity of services for our community members. Um, we have some education and training of systems and processes for just, um, you know, in twenty twenty-one for. Things such as our, our par excellence supply ordering. Um, our medication, you know, Pixis machines, delivery assistance, training on our electronic medical record and those types of um developmental. Um, systems and operations to meet our regulatory standards and requirements as well. Does that answer your question?
Commissioner Kelly, I'll throw in one or two other things, which is, because our partners wouldn't do this themselves because um. They don't, are not the type to toot their own horns, which is one of the great things that we've done here. Um. There's been so much more work put into this than the county has been built for. And I don't just say that as an anecdotal piece, but we've also documented, you know, in, in the role as program manager. What is, what is LMH providing and what else is LMH providing and which of those pieces? And, and if you were to go through the invoicing, the project management contract, you will see that. That our partners have brought so much additional capacity to the table. And um, and the same is true with Burt Nash, with DECA, with Heartland Radac. I- in every perspective of this, there's just a whole bunch of time. Um, and it, and it is, it is a lot of time to try to get six, seven agencies to. Let go of business as usual and business as usual thinking. Um, and so, you know, we all don't, I see a lot of it because I'm at the center of most of it in terms of listening to the conversations. Um, I can't, I, I can't communicate to you enough sort of the value of that. Because we have local people who are focused on meeting the needs of the people in our community. In ways that the state and the region have not imagined. That's what's different. When we say this is different, it's. It's not that, you know, oh, we're going to run the best crisis center in, in the world and in the country. It's we're going to do things differently. And the thing that's driving us is to say, how do we best meet the needs of people who are suffering chronically? Because of health disparities, because of social determinants of health related around poverty and, and uh. A lack of mental health parity and inadequate funding from, from the state. I mean, that's the solid core of these values that, that Patrick was sharing uh when he was speaking, speaking to the slot slide. You can't develop that. I mean, you, you know, you can't develop that programmatically. You do that because the people at the center of this live in this community and they are also linked to people who need these services and have had their own. Lived experience. Um, and so the conundrum is, how do we navigate what we know is wrong? Uh, and not, you know, continue to blame somebody else for the inadequacy of the system. It's what can we do collectively to? To do this. And one of the costs, honestly, Commissioner Kelly, is that is, is loss. I mean, each of these organizations have committed to doing some things that result in some loss for their agency, some huge gain for our community.
Well said, Bob. Thank you. Thank you all.
We will open this up to public comment. Do we have any public comment from folks here in the courthouse? I see that Sherilyn Wells has her hand raised. I don't know if that's from our last item or if it is for this item.
Sure, uh, Sherilyn, I moved you into the panel, Jeanette. If you could stop screen sharing, that would be helpful as well. And Sherilyn, you can come off mute and provide, if you want to provide public comment on this item. She may have. Sherilyn, if, if. If you want to provide public comment, just unmute yourself. There you go.
Um, my name is Sherilyn Wells and. I had the opportunity to work at one of the oldest and first consumer run organizations in the state of Kansas, which was Project Acceptance. Um, we were put out of business for various reasons. Part of the reason is that we were supposedly letting the wrong kind of people into Project Acceptance. We saw a number of people that had both mental health, severe mental health issues. And substance abuse issues at the same time. And the state did not like us having people like that in our building. And they told us that someone, some other person, some other place, they should not be there. Because some of these people were not committed to recovery enough. And that someone else would take care of them. I tried to obey their commands. In that, you know, asking folks that came there with those kinds of problems to leave. There was no backup system, there was no readily available detox, there was no low barrier shelter, there was nothing. When I asked several of those people that they, telling them that they either could not come there, they weren't welcome there. Several of the people that attended Project Acceptance then died in the community. One young Native American who asked me specifically to stay at Project Acceptance in our little. Acceptance residential program that we had. I said, no, I'm sorry, you cannot stay here because the state of Kansas, you know, they were telling me they didn't want those kind of people there. This young Native American laid down in an alley then, and he was run over by a car. Another young Native American um went out into a field and overdosed. A homeless woman went down to a park near where our little peer house was. And I think she had been be- beaten up or something. I don't know what happened. Then she died at a park near us. There got to be a lot of tension in between us and the state of Kansas and Burt Nash. Because there seemed to be no real option for these folks, yet we weren't supposed to take them in. We were supposed to throw them out. In fact, Burt Nash told me to do that. I said, what do I do if these folks relapse? What do I do if these folks come over here and they're under the influence? I was told simply to ask them to leave. And I felt like when I was asking those kinds of folks to have them roaming about through the committee, it not only does not keep them safe. It does not keep or help our community safe. You know, I am sorry, but the resentment that I have had about that has been long and sad. I was very excited when mental health reform came on and I thought, you know. I am someone that has experienced mental illness and homelessness, and I thought, wow, we can get our people out of those big state hospitals. And give them a life in the community. And I was excited up to the point in time. When people with behavioral health problems started dying here in streets, and I know you do.
About thirty seconds left for public comment. If you could please wrap up in about thirty seconds.
I am very excited about this, but I also feel like. We tried to tell you twenty years ago that this was the developing urgent problem. And I felt like instead of listening to the peer community at that time. We were mocked and made fun of that we would let these kind of people in our building, that we shouldn't be doing that. But I didn't know what the other option was, and it's aggravated me for years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will bring this back to discussion from commissioners. I do just want to start by saying, I know that this collaboration takes a lot of work, and so it is wonderful to see. Kind of this progress being made. I think that many of the questions from my fellow commissioners were incredibly important, especially highlighting. How collaboration takes particular effort and thinking through. What are some of those costs when it comes to deciding on? Which electronic management system to use? How are we doing training to make sure that we can all be on the same page? These are important things for us to consider, and I'm happy that we're doing that work because as Ms. Wells pointed out, this is. Well overdue in our community, and so I'm excited that we are moving forward in a productive way.
Just. A ton of gratitude. Uh, yeah, and we can't forget to introduce your guest before we. Um, but I, just a ton of gra- I, this has been a long time coming, and I tell you, as a person who doesn't. See it every day like you all do, it's so neat to see. Those five values, Patrick, that you shared, that's neat to see, because it's, it shows how. Your partnership continues to grow, how you elevate those things like trust and respect and, and. And I think that's really important to talk about those values alongside. All the technical issues that you're trying to solve to put a budget together. I'm sure the process has not been perfect and, you know. I think I've talked to each one of you and heard how the process is not perfect, and that's okay. Um, but it's tremendous growth and, and I, I do believe that we're better together. I believe that we can do more together, but I also believe that it is harder to work together, so thank you for staying in there. And continuing to do the work, moving your organization away from the status quo is a ton of work. And, and I know we've asked you to do that, and I so appreciate you staying engaged in it. Pushing each other, but also giving each other grace as you try to move your individual organizations. I know. I know that's huge, so it is really, I don't know that you see it every day in the work that you do because you're in the crowd. But from a distance, it's so neat to see um the progress that you're making, so, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
And thank you for staying under your budget, too. I appreciate that.
Do we want to introduce Rich now, or do you want to wait till after we have a motion?
That, that, that's completely the, uh, the commission's call.
Okay.
Why don't we go ahead and do introductions now then?
Sure. So I, Patrick Schmidt's of Burt Nash, uh, it's my honor uh to introduce. to introduce the Executive Director for Behavioral Health Partners who will oversee the operations of the Treatment and Recovery Center here. We did an extensive search with a search firm and narrowed it down to two really highly qualified candidates and but just ended up with one who stood out above all, above the other. And just really a gentleman with a lot of experience, both as a direct provider of care, but also an individual who spent the bulk of his career really going across the country, setting up behavioral health units and and inpatient units, really in some of the largest venues metropolitan areas in our country. And thankfully, he settled for, well, really here in Kansas City. So it was very lucky that we were able to get him to come and join us on this effort and just really proud and pleased to introduce Rich Phaila, who will take a couple of minutes and and introduce himself and answer any questions you may have. Rich?
Thank you, Patrick. A lot of things are going through my mind right now. I can tell you, first of all, it is really an honor and a privilege for me to be the Executive Director of the Treatment and Recovery Center. The collaboration in the community, the support of Douglas County Commission, the support of the population in Douglas County is unbelievable. The agencies that are represented, all are doing their very best to take care of the patients that we will be serving at the Crisis Center. For me, this is rochishana. It's a new year. I am very happy that it's a new year and a new start, not only for moving forward with the Crisis Center, but also getting an opportunity to set up a system that will keep people right here in the community and not having them have to go to Osawatomie. I worked at Osawatomie for about a year and a half before I came here. I served a lot of the people from Douglas County. And I can tell you the most critical thing that those of us, you know, there but for the grace of God, don't have those illnesses, never think about is taking a person's liberty away from them and keeping them in a state hospital, which is a nice facility, a 600 acre campus, one of the oldest psychiatric hospitals in the United States and away from their family, away from everybody that they know, away from anything familiar and keeping them there for anywhere from 10 to 14 days, some folks even longer. I mean, there are people there in a couple of buildings that have been there for years that have never left that campus. So what we're doing, everyone is to be commended on. It's unbelievable, the amount of stress and dehumanization that takes place when you take a person's liberty away from them. Being staying here in Douglas County, staying in Lawrence, being able to have family involvement in what's going on with you will be a tremendous asset and will really help people. My primary concern is helping patients that can't help themselves. This center will have no wrong door, so it doesn't matter how you come to us anytime of the day, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Our job will be to make this a success, but more importantly, our job will be to help people and to keep them in our community and to help them get rid of the symptoms of their mental illness and their substance dependency. So it's it's my honor to say thank you for having me here and and letting me have the opportunity to run this center. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Portio. Thank you so much for joining us. We do really appreciate all of your efforts in this work and look forward to the collaboration and shanatava. With that, are we ready to have a?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the pre-funding agreement for Behavioral Health Partners for the Treatment and Recovery Center and the amount not to exceed $1.3 million.
Second, all of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. We will move on to item 4.5, a continued discussion on a request from Shawnee Mission School District to file an amicus brief on behalf of the district related to Butler versus Shawnee Mission School District.
Commissioner, I've commissioners, I'm just going to provide a brief overview of this item today and just give commissioners an update as to what we know. Douglas County was asked to participate in the process of developing amicus briefs for the litigation or engaged with Shawnee Mission School District versus Butler. That has been that we've been notified has been will be heard by the Supreme Court. Just for folks that are listening that might not know, an amicus brief is legal term and a Latin phrase that generally means friend of the court. So this would, we would be asked to author a a brief that would from a from a group that has strong interest or views on that subject matter, which we do as as a county and under obligations under Senate Bill 40. But it would not make us a party to the action and it would be, it would be just a basically a way for us to petition the court and and in that in that way. The briefs, we we think the briefs are really due here in the next couple of weeks. Shawnee Mission is trying to gather all that information by early September. There have been no oral arguments set, but so that timeframe is a little unclear at this point. We are trying to to I think Shawnee Mission is trying to gather that information by early September. If there was a desire to do that, I know oftentimes in the conversation I had with counsel from Shawnee Mission School District, there was who might also be authoring briefs associated with this litigation. I know they have approached a number of school districts and counties. We've had some conversation with counties, less with some of the districts. And and really some of the complications with Senate Bill 40 are really different for school districts in that litigation versus counties. We have not been able to determine if any other counties are writing a specific amicus brief yet. So if depending on how the commissioners wanted to go, there, you know, it's also possible to instead of just us writing our own amicus brief, we could ask to sign on to another amicus brief that another jurisdiction might prepare for it, prepare for the litigation. So we, so if that was an option, we don't know of any yet, but that could be something legal counsel could bring back to the commission at a future date if if it if somebody else does file a brief and once it's reviewed by legal counsel and if there are some recommendation, you know, some some an opportunity for the commission to decide if they'd like to sign on for that. I know it's kind of just a high level overview of where we're at on on or what's been asked of us. Does the commission have any questions or any thoughts at at this point? But I don't really have anything in front of you to act on today.
This is Commissioner Portio. It does sound like if we know of another county that will be writing a brief, that that will be brought before us so we can decide if we'd like to sign on at that point. We just don't know of any other county.
Correct.
That's taking action. That sounds like a great place for us from my perspective at this point.
I would agree at this questionnaire in here. I think that if we learn of that and can have continued discussion at a future meeting about that possibility. But I don't, I don't feel compelled to give further direction than that, especially with kind of lack of clarity about about some of it.
Yeah, I'm in the same spot. I'd just rather wait and see what happens at this point and then see what our options are.
I appreciate that direction commissioners and if we learn of any new information, we'll be sure to bring it back before the commission is as possible.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to appointments. I saw that we do.
I sent you one very late today. And so if you've not had time to review it, it is certainly something we can take up at next week's agenda.
We will go ahead and do that next week. Thank you. We will move on to miscellaneous. Sarah, what do you have for us this week?
Mister, as you have a memo in the packet, there are a couple of dates coming up here this fall, so I just want to make sure you're aware of some of those. And just let us know if you attend, plan to attend those and so we can make sure we notice them if we need to. Also, I just, I had staff put together a couple of quick updates of some really exciting stuff that's happening in terms of our partnerships in Douglas County with work happening, you know, in the region and throughout the nation. Specifically, we've been asked the Behavioral Health team and the Criminal Justice Team. So Mike Brower and Bob Tryansky have been asked to participate in a learning collaborative for Connection Health Solutions and which is a really exciting opportunity to work with some other communities across the nation that are doing some real cutting edge work involving crisis systems. And so there's that, there's an update related to the Built for Zero process and some updates from the Watkins Museum. And that's all I have commissioners, just stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. This is Commissioner Portio. Just from a scheduling standpoint, I do plan on going to the DECA Harvesting Hope event. And would like to go to the Kansas Association of Counties meeting.
On the Kansas Association, I do think I owe you a piece of information related to our voting delegates. So I need to, I appreciate you mentioning that and I'll make sure I get that to you.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Reed here. I'll mention, excuse me, I'll mention also that I'll be, I plan to attend the Harvesting Hope on the 16th. Don't yet know about the others though.
Yeah, since you're already noticing it, I'll be going to Harvesting Hope. So yeah, just notice it.
Do we have any miscellaneous from other commissioners? Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you.